In Rolling Meadows, this is November 13th, 2018, City Council Meeting. Being adjourned, it's being brought to you at 7:30 PM. Please rise for the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Cannon.
Here.
Budmets.
Present.
Majikis.
Here.
Gallo.
Here.
Banjer.
Here.
Diastis.
Present.
Williams.
Here.
Seven present and none absent, there is a quorum. Therefore, members of the audience are reminded that these proceedings are being videotaped, current and future broadcasts over the city's cable television channel. First order of business is to approve the minutes from the October 16th, 2018 Committee of the Whole Meeting, is there a motion to approve those meetings? Mr. Budmets has made that, is there a second? Mr. Banjer has made that, are there any corrections, deletions, corrections, additions, or deletions to the minutes? Seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Minutes have been approved. I am requesting a motion to deviate.
So moved.
Mr. Banjer has made that, and a second? Any discussion? We're deviating for the sole purpose of swearing in a new commander, Mike Fior, Sergeant Brian Berry, and a police officer, Sean Bilchin. Chief, if you want to come on forward.
I'd like to call up Sergeant Mike Fior up front, also Officer Brian Berry, and our newest officer, Sean Bilchin, if you guys can come right up. Well, yours, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you. You do have the mic, I was a little worried about you going yet. I was a little worried, five minutes ago you weren't here, but they told me you would make it, no problem. First, first we're starting off with our senior member here, Mike Fior. Twenty-one years, correct, right?
Yes.
And I've had the opportunity, having been on the Fire and Police Commission for twelve years dating back into the nineties, I got to meet a number of these gentlemen, and they have, you know, we could go on and on of all the things they've done, but I will tell you that with Commander Fior, I think it was five years that I got my first smile out of him, because I think he was in investigations for the first five years, and he was always solving problems or questions. So Chief, hold me, script. Please step forward, there we go. Please, please raise your right hand. Mike Fior, having been appointed to the office of Police Commander in the city of Rolling Meadows, County of Cook, do hereby solemnly promise that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of Illinois and all the laws and ordinances of the city of Rolling Meadows, and that I will perform the duties, I will perform these duties of the office of Rolling Meadows Police Commander to the best of my ability. Congratulations.
We have a little bit of a tradition here, usually when we have a officer being sworn in or a promotion, we usually have a family member or a very special person in that individual's life. At this time, I want to call Tracy on up, and what Tracy will be doing is we'll be pinning on Commander Fior's badge.
Now Sergeant Berry, we're gonna have some chat, you know, he has these new sergeant stripes that have been on for the last couple of weeks, and I happened to see him during the polling day, I mean, I had to put my sunglasses on, and plus the fact, you see the collar, he's been polishing them. Again, now, he's, he's not as senior as Mike, he's only been here twenty years, but the, we could go back into his history, but I think the citizens of Rolling Meadows need to know that he had a career in entertainment before he came here. He left fame and fortune and big dollars in, where were you at?
The World Wrestling Federation.
I just think that, you know, he gave that all up to come to the city of Rolling Meadows. I mean, that takes real heart, it really does, so. And I promised him that I wouldn't tease him too much, because I've already met his parents tonight, and we gave him, we gave him good, didn't we, tonight? So, thank you. Yeah, I hope I have a sheet for you. That was from your dad back there, I heard that was. Please raise your right hand. I, Brian Berry.
I, Brian Berry.
Having been appointed to the office of Police Sergeant.
Having been appointed to the office of Police Sergeant.
In the city of Rolling Meadows, County of Cook.
In the city of Rolling Meadows, County of Cook.
Do solemnly promise.
Do solemnly promise.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And all the laws and ordinances of the city of Rolling Meadows.
And all the laws and ordinances of the city of Rolling Meadows.
And I will perform these duties.
And I will perform these duties.
Of the office of Rolling Meadows Police Sergeant.
Of the office of Rolling Meadows Police Sergeant.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thanks. I'd like to call Brian, wipe off the name. And just to tell you how famous he really is, my son-in-law's from Australia, and a couple, I think it was about a year and a half ago, we were at a retirement party, my son-in-law saw Brian here, and he goes, "That's Johnny Utah." I go, "Yes, it is."
And Sean, please step forward, because this is where it all begins, man. This is where it all begins. We're glad you're here, I understand you came from Park Forest, and so, we have a fan, we have a fan club down here, okay. And this is what, your first week with us?
First day.
First day, whoa.
You've got seven hours under his belt, sorry.
Wow. If you want to talk about experiences, there's a couple guys there that can probably explain to it. Would you please raise your right hand? I, Sean Bilchin.
I, Sean Bilchin.
Did I say it correctly?
Yeah.
Thank you. Having been appointed to the office of Police Officer.
Having been appointed to the office of Police Officer.
In the city of Rolling Meadows, County of Cook.
In the city of Rolling Meadows, County of Cook.
Do hereby solemnly promise.
Do hereby solemnly promise.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And all of the laws and ordinances of the city of Rolling Meadows.
And all the laws and ordinances of the city of Rolling Meadows.
And that I will perform these duties.
And I will perform these duties.
Of the office of Rolling Meadows Police Officer.
Of the office of Rolling Meadows Police Officer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
And I'd like to have Sean's mother, Marty, come on up to pin the star. And if he doesn't behave, I'm gonna give you a cough, so.
There's a lot of pressure, you're doing good. You don't have that class, but you're good.
Is this considered line of duty if he gets pinched?
Yeah.
I mean, first day, I'm here to help you, yeah. Thank you. Please give all. And we're gonna take like a two-minute recess, so anyone wants to come take voters up here with the chief or the new officers, please step forward.
Thank you, Mayor. Vote time.
Thank you, Mayor. You ready?[823.79]
In that area that includes light manufacturing, warehousing, and distribution. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Ballantyne. The next signatory is Max, and I'm sorry, Max, I can't make out the last name. G O?
Oh, Matt, sorry, my handwriting's terrible.
Max. And how do you say your last name?
Uh, Good.
Okay, thank you. You have five minutes to speak to the council.
Thank you, I don't, I won't take all five minutes, I'll just take a short period of time, and thank you, Linda. So, we're excited about the opportunity to do business in the city of Rolling Meadows. This is our second industrial project in the city, the first was successful as well, and we really do appreciate the support. We look forward to being able to upgrade a facility significantly, invest capital into it to do so, and then subsequently bring a high-quality tenant to the village and, or to the city and jobs with that, so. We appreciate your time and any questions that you have, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you for coming forward. The next signatory is Peter Tandasilis. Was I close, Peter?
Very close, Mayor, thank you. Peter Santillis.
Yeah.
Good evening again, Mayor, members of the City Council, city staff, and residents of the city of Rolling Meadows. My name is Peter Santillis, Legal Counsel for Venture One Real Estate, and here also to answer any questions about the project, and we've been through a couple of meetings already, and again, we're very excited about the opportunity, and once again, here to answer any questions. Thank you very much for your time.
That closes the portion of the meeting. That brings us to pending ordinances in for a second reading. Ordinance A, number eighteen dash forty-eight, is to approve tax abatement. This ordinance, if adopted, would approve abating the taxes for the fiscal year beginning January first, 2019, and ending December thirty-first, 2019. During the annual budget process each year, the city of Rolling Meadows abates certain property tax levies for general obligation bonds, ordinances that are filed with Cook County. By abating these bonds ordinances each year, the property tax levy will not include the annual principal and interest payments for these bond payments. The debt service is paid through other funding services if not levied by the city of Rolling Meadows. If the city council decides not to abate these taxes, the property tax level would, property tax levy would increase by the annual debt service payments amount. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Diastis made that, do we have a second? Williams has made the second, is there a discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Budmets?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Banjer?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, that ordinance is approved. That brings us to ordinance B, number eighteen dash forty-nine, to approve the issuance of General Obligation Bonds Series 2018 in for the second reading. This ordinance, if adopted, would authorize the issuance of General Obligation Bond Series 2018. The ordinance, also known as the Bond Perimeters, Parameters Ordinance, is presented to the city council for consideration and approval. The ordinance drafted by the city council, city bond, city's bond council, Caton Mutchin Russman, L.L.P., authorizes the issuance of not to exceed nine point five million dollars principal among general obligation bonds. Proceeds from the bonds will fund the construction of two new fire stations, including land acquisition, demolition of the existing structures, engineering and design costs, and the acquisition of furniture, fixtures, and equipment. Note, since the October twenty-third city council meeting, the underwriter, RFP, process was completed and the underwriter was selected. The city's bond council added the underwriter Bernardi Securities Incorporated to the bond ordinance. Do I have a motion? Who forward? Mr. Cannon has made that, we have a second, Mr. Banjer, is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Majikis?
Yes.
Gallo?
No.
Banjer?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Budmets?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Seven in favor and none opposed, this moves to second reading. Ordinance D is to approve the property tax levy for the library. This ordinance, if adopted, would approve levying property taxes for the fiscal year beginning January first, 2019, and ending December thirty-first, 2019, for the library. The Rolling Meadows Library Board of Trustees approved the fiscal year 2019 library budget at their October second, 2018 Library Board meeting. The amount of the library's 2018 property tax levy for the library, its fiscal year 2019 budget, is three million, nine hundred and fifty-three thousand and fifty-six dollars, which is a two-point-one percent increase, or eighty-one thousand, three hundred and seven dollars, from the library's 2017 tax year levy. Pursuant to state law, the city is required to approve the library's annual tax levy ordinance. As a reminder, the library's board approves the library budget, the city only approves the annual tax levy. Is there a motion to consider this ordinance for first reading? Mr. Cannon has done that, Mr. Banjer has seconded, is there any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Gallo?
Yes.
Banjer?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Budmets?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Seven in favor and none opposed, this moves to second reading. Ordinance D is to approve the property tax levy for the city. This ordinance, if adopted, would approve the property tax levy as shown in the fiscal year 2019 proposed budget, from four-point-seven percent to two-point-seven percent, and include a one-time use of reserves. This two-stage, multi-year approach accumulates the amount of proposed bond payment and lessens the amount of total tax increase for next year's property tax levy. Since it accumulates reserves, the partial amount of the future debt service payment would be levied in the public works line item fiscal year 2019, and then reallocated for the estimated annual debt service payment in future levy years. For the fiscal year 2019 budget, and the generals fund would reserve the estimated annual debt service amount in the general funds reserves. The property tax levy for 2020 would show the full amount of the annual debt service payment. The general funds, estimated fund balance for fiscal year 2019 is within the parameters of the fund, of the fund balance policy at twenty-eight point five percent, which is an estimated nine point three million-dollar fund balance. Is there a motion to consider this ordinance for first reading? Mr. Williams has made that, do we have a second? Thank you, is there any discussion? Mr. Diastis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One, we discussed this at the committee of the whole meeting, we also had an option to reduce the levy to two percent. I would like to make a motion that we reduce the levy from two-point-seven to two percent.
Okay. Do we have a second to Mr. Diastis's motion? Seeing none, it fails for levy, for lack of a second. Is there any other discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Banjer?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Budmets?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the ordinance moves to second reading. Ordinance E is to amend the city pay plan for the fire logistics coordinator. This ordinance, if adopted, would amend the city's pay plan as per discussion from a recent closed session meeting pertaining to personnel for the logistics coordinator pay classification to a C-four salary range for fiscal year 2018. Is there a motion to consider this ordinance for first reading? Ms. Pajikas has made that motion, has been seconded by Mr. Banjer, is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Diastis?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Budmets?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Gallo?
No.
Banjer?
Yes.
Six in favor, one opposed, the ordinance moves to second reading. Ordinance F, to approve a liquor license, a liquor license app, liquor license application for a Class A-two liquor license for Daisy's Cafe, Rolling Meadows, L.L.C., at thirty-three, thirty-four Kirchhoff Road. This ordinance, if adopted, would approve an order, an application for a Class A-two liquor license. This liquor license application is being requested by Daisy's Cafe, Rolling Meadows, L.L.C. This new restaurant cafe and video gaming establishment will be located at thirty-three, thirty-four Kirchhoff Road. They are in the final process of completing the build-out, and they hope to open in late December or early January. The definition of an A-two liquor license, a Class A-two license shall authorize the retail sales on premises of alcoholic liquors for consumption on premises, but no such licenses shall be issued to any person, firm, corporation, or partnership unless a restaurant is operating in the same premises. Place or location for which the said alcohol liquor license is applied. No alcohol liquor shall be sold by any A-two license holder for consumption off premises. There should be no dancing on the premises of any Class A-two license holder unless said premises are rented for a specific day by the holder of a Class C license, as defined in this chapter. Is there a motion to consider the ordinance for first reading?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Diastis has made that motion, is there a second? Ms. Robb, thank you. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Williams?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Budmets?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Banjer?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Seven in favor and none opposed, the ordinance moves forward to second reading. Ordinance G, to amend the city's personnel rules ordinance, number eighteen dash oh-three, and city ordinance eighteen dash oh-seven, to be consistent with the recently passed state legislation. This ordinance, if adopted, would amend the city's personnel rules ordinance, number eighteen dash three, and the city's code ordinances, eighteen dash seven, to be consistent with the recently passed state legislation, extending the timeframe for an employee to file a complaint for harassment or discrimination from a hundred and eighty days to three hundred days. Is there, is there a motion to move this forward?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
And Mr. Banjer has seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Cannon?
Yes.
Budmets?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Banjer?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Budmets?
No.
Majikis?
Yes.
Gallo?
No.
Banjer?
Yes.
Seven in favor and none opposed, this moves on to a second reading. Ordinance H is to amend the liquor code to approve a Class G-one liquor license for video gaming at Grande Jakes, Rolling Meadows, doing business as Grande Jakes Fresh Mexican Grill, located at fifty-five hundred South New Wilkie Road. This ordinance, if adopted, would approve the city's second Class G-one liquor license for video gaming in the city of Rolling Meadows. The Illinois Gaming Board approved video gaming license for Grande Jakes, which is located at fifty-five hundred South New Wilkie Road, Ogonkun Road, at the Friday, November second meeting. The definition of a G-one liquor license, a Class G-one liquor license shall authorize a license holder for a Class A-one, A-two, A-three, or Class D in good standing to file requests for video gaming terminal operator and video gaming terminal business license application. If applying and receiving this Class G-one, the business operator will not place signs, posters, pictures, or any wording on the windows or doors of the establishment mentioning video gaming which exceeds ten percent of the existing signage. They will also not place on the outside walls or roofs of the establishment or shopping area any video gaming wording pictures, in addition, a partition wall inside the establishment will be created for the video gaming area consisting of a four-foot solid and permanent stable material, such as wood, paneling, or finished or painted drywall visual barrier for the lower half, and lattice or design blocks for the upper half. This establishment must have at least one grill. By each video gaming machine, there must be a table, cabinet, or shelf, so drinks and food are not placed on the floor or on the machine. Is there a motion to consider this ordinance in for first reading? Mr. Cannon has made that motion, has been seconded by Mr. Diastis, is there any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Budmets?
Yes.
Majikis?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Banjer?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance moves forward for a second reading. This brings us to new business. The next item of business is to motion, excuse me, the next item of business is to approve the payments of bills on warrants eleven thirteen eighteen. Is there a motion to approve the warrant? Mr. Banjer has made that, Ms. Pajikas has seconded, is there any discussion? Mr. Budmets?
Last meeting, I pulled one bill because I didn't think it was appropriate to pay it, and I received some information on it yesterday, I still don't think it's appropriate to be paid, I think it needs to have a separate, have a separate approval, because it exceeds the amount that the city, that the city staff is allowed to approve without a ordinance.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Majikis?
Yes.
Gallo?
No.
Banjer?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
With five in favor and two opposed, this warrant is approved. The next item on the agenda are the consent resolutions, it consists of eleven items, J through T. Does any alderman wish to remove any items from the consent agenda for resolutions? Seeing none, the chair declares in order for one motion to consider all resolutions in one motion without debate. Is there such a motion? Mr. Banjer has made that, Ms. Pajikas has seconded, the question is, shall all resolutions Resolution J, number eighteen dash R dash one oh eight, authorize the professional services of underwriter regarding the city's general obligation bonds. This resolution, if adopted, would approve the underwriting agreement for bond issuance series 2018 as part of the bond issuance process. The city's financial advisor, professional service provider, Kane McKenon Capital Incorporated, conducted a request for proposed, proposal process for bond underwriting services. As a reminder, the underwriter is a municipal securities dealer that purchases a new issue of bonds from the issuer, the city, to distribute the bonds to investors. Three proposals were received and evaluated. Picardis Securities Incorporated was selected on the following criteria. The lowest responsible professional services provider, past performance, reliable experience, willingness to focus on the local market, and the ability to provide call options at eight, nine, and ten years. Also note, Picardis Securities has worked with the city of Rolling Meadows as the underwriter on the 2012 and 2013 refinancing bonds. K, the resolution, number eighteen dash R dash one oh seven, authorizes the support of a Cook County six-B classification tax incentive for property located at fifty-five, forty Meadowbrook Industrial Court. This resolution, if adopted, would recommend to Cook County approval of a Cook County CB classification incentive for property located at fifty-five, forty Meadowbrook Industrial Court. The committee of the whole reviewed the request at the October sixteenth, 2018 meeting, and generally supported the six-B request at that time. Also, the Economic Development Committee reviewed the request on October second, 2018, and voted unanimously in support of the six-B incentive at fifty-five, forty Meadowbrook Court. The property has been a hundred percent vacant and unused since November twenty-sixteenth, although the property is currently subject to a six-B incentive. There has been no partial, no practical applications of the benefit towards attracting long-term tenant on the site, therefore, the applicant is requesting the current six-B incentive, which will, which began in 2014, be extinguished and a new six-B incentive replace it. The new incentive would begin during 2019 with the hopes of securing DePage County-based company, the DePage County-based company, Perfect Turf, as a long-term resident. Resolution L, number eighteen dash R dash one one oh, is to award a contract for water system modeling and engineering service study citywide. This resolution, if adopted, would award a contract for performing engineering services associated with an update to the modeling of the city's water distribution system. A water modeling survey provides the city with critical information needed to make decisions related to water system capital improvements necessary in the five-year capital improvement program. The updated water system modeling is recommended for identifying areas of the city where limitations of water flows and met pressures may affect fire hydrant performance and water system performance. There has been, there have been, and continue to be several areas of the city where historical flow testing has shown lower-than-desired pressures in the distribution system. These conditions can be approved by strategic placement of a new water main location, sizes, and connections when replacements are made. Resolution M, number eighteen dash R dash one eleven, is to award a change order for professional design engineering services contract related to the proposed water main improvements on Harbor Drive. This resolution, if adopted, would authorize the change order not to exceed the amount of twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and three dollars to the existing contract approved at the May twenty-second, 2018 city council meeting for engineering services associated with the first phase of the Harbor Drive Water Main Replacement Project. The contract was approved for the first phase of the project in the amount not to exceed thirty-eight thousand, eighty-one dollars and fifty-eight cents for professional design engineering services needed to replace approximately twelve hundred linear feet of eight-inch water main along and under Harbor Drive with twelve water main. The project was designed and was publicly let on September fourth, 2018. The bids were rejected by the city council on September twenty-fifth due to unfavorable pricing and have been received as a report, as reported at the December twenty-fifth council meeting, staff requests adding the second phase of the project, thereby increasing quantities to obtain better unit pricing due to the time of the year and the economies of scale. Staff will work with the consulting engineer and redefine the project limits, addition of approximately eight hundred linear feet of water main, and rebid the newly scoped project in the first quarter of 2019, therefore, increasing the likelihood of favorable pricing to the city. Resolution N, number eighteen dash R dash one twelve, approve purchase of a 2019 Freightliner Dump Truck with snow removal equipment. This resolution, if adopted, would authorize the purchase of a new model, year 2019 Freightliner Single-X Double Dump Truck with new snow removal equipment to assure a fiscal year 2019 delivery for the Public Works Department. The truck will be utilized by the Streets Division for emergency response, daily operations, and snow move, snow removal operations. This piece of vehicle will replace the existing dump truck, T-3112, and will be fifteen, which will be fifteen years old at the time of the replacement, and currently has thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and forty-two miles and approximately thirty-eight hundred hours, operating hours. The hour-to-mileage equivalent is approximately thirty miles per hour of operation, therefore, the equipment vehicle mileage is approximately a hundred and fourteen thousand miles. To ensure a fiscal year 29 delivery for the Public Works Department in conjunction with previous vehicle replacement committee discussions held on June twelfth, 2018, and September eleventh, 2018, staff requests the authorization to order the replacement of the T-3112 during fiscal year 2018 due to chassis procurement issues. As a result, as a result, the replacement vehicles' approximate delivery date will be in the fourth quarter of fiscal year 2019. Staff has procured a quote through the Sourcewell Purchasing Co-op, formerly known as NJPA, as it has been competitively bid in the amount shown through Trans-Chicago Freightliner. There's a hundred and twenty, there's a hundred and eighty thousand dollars allocated in the proposed fiscal year 2019 budget for the line. The bid price is sixty, a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars. This brings us to resolution number eighteen dash R dash one one three, is to approve a supplemental statement of work to the existing contract for professional services with Municipal GIS Partners, the GIS Consortium Service Provider. The resolution, if adopted, would approve a supplemental statement of work in Municipal GIS Partner Incorporated, Partners Incorporated. The city of Rolling Meadows has had a longstanding interest in developing enterprise system, geographical information system in 2014. The city entered into an intergovernment agreement to join GIS consortium, which is made up of thirty-one other municipalities, utilizing shared incentives and services, and awarded a contract for our first, and awarded our first contract for services to Municipal GIS Partners. Over the last five years, the city has been building what we believe to be a very thorough geographic informational system that is being utilized by all city staff and public to access information on the property, underground utility data, and community events, to name just a few. Staff has been, has worked with the GIS specialists and GIS coordinator to develop a five-year plan for future development, and established a city GIS steering committee that meets monthly to monitor progress on projects and assess, and prioritize future products, projects. Staff is requesting a contract for the services to assist with the development and integration of data into the city's new ERP platform. This will provide the city with services three days a week provided by GIS specialists. Staff has identified the need and anticipates that the services will be adequate to support the information technology staff for the next twelve to eighteen months. There has, note, that the level of service increased from two days a week to three days a week in 2018. Staff has been satisfied with the services that are being provided by GIS specialists from Municipal GIS Partners, and believe that it is the city's best interests and cost efficiency to approve the agreement for the Shared Business Model Service Agreement for fiscal year 2019, beginning January first, 2019, and expiring on December thirty-first, 2019. Our consortium staff member will work for the city twenty-four hours per week, generally Monday, Tuesdays, and Thursdays, with his time shared between Public Works and the information technology offices. Proposed additional costs, the additional cost of the services for 2019 will be two thousand, five hundred and ninety-two dollars, for a total cost of a hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars for the project. Funding for the service is currently provided and is proposed to continue to be provided in the Public Works Utility Funds, and is included in the proposed fiscal year 2019 budget. Note that because the original contract was executed at two days per week of the service level, the three-days-per-week contract is referred to as supplemental. Resolution number eighteen dash R one fourteen, award contract to Commonwealth Edison to relocate overhead electrical service at the new fire station, twenty-three twenty, twenty-three fifty. Site, this resolution, if adopted, would award a contract to Commonwealth Edison to relocate overhead electrical service at twenty-three twenty, twenty-three fifty Hicks Road. The fire station planned to be built at the site known as twenty-three twenty, twenty-three fifty Hicks Road has the need to have the overload, overhead power lines relocated as the fail-safe emergency responders for the city, there's a need to have unimpeded egress and ingress by persons and apparatus at all times. The current overhead electrical lines drape over the front side of the site, and if compromised by falling to ground, would prohibit access to and from the fire station by both personnel and apparatus. Relocating these lines as engineered by Commonwealth Edison is necessary to provide the core mission of the fire department. Resolution number eighteen dash one one five, authorize the support of Next Level Northwest Application to receive grant funding from J.P. Morgan Chase Advancing Cities Program. This resolution, if adopted, would authorize a grant application funding requesting from J.P. Morgan Chase Advanced Cities Program for the benefit of the Next Level Northwest. The city is currently a member of the recently established not-for-profit Business Accelerator Program. The organization includes five communities, Elk Grove Village, Anover Park, Hoffman Estates, Rolling Meadows, and Schaumburg. In order to execute on the mission, the organization needs to solicit donations and grant funding for its operations. In order to do that, NLNW will be applying for grant from the JP Morgan Chase Advanced Cities Program. However, in order to apply, in order to apply, each of the five participating communities need to submit a resolution indicating the municipality's support. Resolution R number 18-R-16 is to award a contract for grant consulting services. This resolution, if adopted, would authorize the city to contract with Administrative Consulting Specialists LLC for a period of three years beginning January 1, 2019 to December 31, 2021 to complete research, proposal development, and submission of potential funding opportunities in the form of federal, state, and private grants for the expenses related to the police and fire departments and the fire station project. The city currently budgets $12,500 for these service administrative grant consultants. Annual cost is reduced to $12,000 each year for three years from fiscal year 2019 to '21. Over the last three years, Administrative Consulting Specialists has assisted the city of Rolling Meadows in receiving more than $240,000 in grant funds. As resolution number 18-R-117 approve purchase of replacement computers for the annual computer replacement plan. The resolution, if adopted, would approve the purchase of replacement computers. The computer replacement program has been put into place to refresh all city laptops, desktops, and tablets and IT, that IT maintains. The program replaces roughly one-fourth of the existing equipment per fiscal year in an ongoing basis. This year, the city will be replacing eight desktop computers and six laptop computers. The replacement program ensures that there is a consistent hardware refreshing occurring while spreading the cost over multiple fiscal years. The program also ensures that hardware and software usability and compatibility remain at levels that are current, keeping all equipment current prevents issues incompatibility involving either old hardware or software. The computer replacement program allows for a staggered approach for operating systems deployment, i.e. Windows 10. Staggering in operating system development is beneficial for two main reasons. Primarily, a staggered rollout approach will allow end users time to become familiar with the operating system before it is deployed across all equipment. They will both decrease support calls to IT and keep end user efficiently, efficiency at a cost level while users become familiar with the new operating system. Secondly, IT will investigate less time testing programs with the new operating system simply due to the fact there will be less developments per year compared to the citywide developed deployment. Staff repeat pricing from Dell through the Midwestern Higher Education Compact Contract. The MHEC allows the city to purchase Dell equipment under a bulk process agreement with pre-negotiated contracts derived from a competitive bidding process. Council is being asked to approve spending on the project. The project is budgeted in the 2018 budget. The length of the budget is estimated to be three to four months. Resolution T number 18-R-118 is to award a contract for road salt alternative deicing materials for the winter of 2018-19. This resolution, if adopted, could authorize the purchase of road salt alternate product for use in snow melt and ice control of the city streets during 2018-2019. The original alternate product, previously known as slicer, was first utilized as an experimental material in 2007 and 2008. It contains magnesium additive and although typically at a 50% higher cost per ton than untreated road salt, has been far more effective as a road deicer and allowed for approximately 50% reduction in salt use. This product has, this product has been used in the past 10 winter seasons. Staff recommends continuing to utilize Crystal Visions Incorporated as the provider of the Liquid M2000 road salt deicing product formerly known as slicer, C2000, that is applied to the road salt on the site at the Public Works facility. This purchase allows for the reduction of the quality of road salt use if the winter season conditions for precipitation and temperature are within typical averages. The proposed purchase is for up to 8,800 gallons as needed of Liquid M2000 deicer product at $2.28 per gallon at a cost of $20,064. Note that Crystal Visions is the only known vendor in the area to supply this product. Again, the question is, shall all 11 resolutions be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Gallo?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
Majikas?
Yes.
Seven in favor and none opposed. The resolutions are approved. This brings the council to other business and reports. The mayor has no appointments or proclamations. City clerk?
None.
This brings us to city staff reports, community items of interest. Mr. Crumstock?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Obviously, the first one that we have is the comprehensive plan survey. We'll be open until November 15. You can still visit www.planforrollingsmeadows.org to take, to take place or to do the survey or find out more. And also, if you want a paper copy, we do have some paper copies here at City Hall at the senior center, and we can make more available at the library if you would like. Reminder that Monday, November 5, early refuse set up began. Please place your refuse at the curb no earlier than 3:00 p.m. the day prior to pickup. And starting this Friday, actually Thursday, there's a preview, but Friday, November 16 to November 18, the Friends of the Rolling Meadows Fall Book Sale at the library at 3110 Martin Lane will be conducting their book sale. So again, as we usually say, check which date you want to go. There are different times and different days, but there's bargains galore between books, DVDs, CDs, audiobooks, and more. And then with the leaves falling, just a reminder for residents to not dump or blow your cuttings into the street and down the sewer. But we do want to make sure that people do know that the city has two street sweepers working throughout the city. One is a city rolling meadow sweeper, and the other one is the contractor. But they do work throughout the community and they do hit the different areas. And obviously, here at Rolling Meadows, we're again partnering with the United States Marine Corps Reserve to collect toys for children in need through the Marines Toys for Tots Program. Residents may deliver new unwrapped toys to the drop boxes that are here at City Hall, 3600 Kirchhoff Road, and that's during regular open hours, and at the Rolling Meadows Library at 3110 Martin Lane. Toy donations will be accepted from November, obviously through December 7. And then we want to remind people as you are walking into the City Hall on the west side of the building, the city Swank and Elgin Recycling are conducting a holiday light recycling program again. Collection boxes, as I mentioned, they're only here at City Hall. Items that are going to be accepted include the following items, mini lights or Italian lights, C7 lights, C9 lights, rope lights, and LED lights. All colors and lengths will be accepted. The city cannot accept garland, live greens, wreaths, or other non-perishable recyclable items. This program actually started already, and it's going through February 15 of 2019. City Hall and Public Works will be closed on Thursday, November 22 and Friday, November 23 in observance of the Thanksgiving holiday. Refuse collection will be delayed. Thursday routes will be collected and Friday, Friday routes will be collected on Saturday. And then the week of November 26 is the final week of yard wake collection. So even with the snow, we're still on that schedule. Yard waste collection ends Friday, November 30. And then on Saturday, December 1, the Rolling Meadows Police Department will be conducting a food drive outside of the Jewel Osko Food located at 3,000 Kirchhoff Road from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. We do appreciate you all donating one truck to help us out for that event, too. And again, the final one for this one is the city will be conducting its annual tree light event on Thursday, December 6, starting promptly at 6:00 p.m. Santa will make his appearance at the tree outside of 3140 Kirchhoff Road, just outside of the McDonald's. There will be fireworks that will follow the tree lighting, and then please join the city for the spaghetti dinner while supplies last at the fire station. And the dinner starts at 6:30. So please come enjoy the events and the season in Rolling Meadows.
Thank you. I believe, Mr. Boat, you are on now.
Thank you, Mayor. Staff wanted to take this opportunity to update Mayor and council regarding the proposed Brookview Lane Sunset Drive Sanitary Sewer project that's been talked about at several previous Committee of the Whole meetings. We held a public information meeting on October 22. We had 14 of the potentially affected 22 properties in attendance. We had a number of good discussion, good questions asked at the meeting in terms of how special service area would work and could water services be included? Could people opt out for constructing, including in the project, the private sector? Number of things that staff is currently evaluating. At the end of the meeting, we were asked by the residents themselves, kind of for a show of hands, straw poll, as to level of interest. At that time, six property owners indicated support for the project as currently proposed by staff. Six indicated support conditionally. I'll call it based on the ability to get more information and have questions answered, and only one property owner at that meeting indicated opposition to the project. Staff put meeting minutes together. We distributed those by mail last week. Staff also committed at this meeting to develop a survey of interests with a number of the questions about potential inclusions of construction improvements put in there to better formalize for, for staff what the opinions are and where people are. We will plan to get those out, the surveys out this week. We ask for them back roughly around the 1st of December and have the intent of, on the December 11 Committee of the Whole meeting, presenting the results of those surveys. That's not a formal vote, but just a level of interest by the residents at that time. If there is enough commitment, staff will be recommending that we go to the next step, which would be to draft an ordinance to begin the process of creating a special service area. And a reminder that the actual voting, as many residents at these meetings have been asking about in terms of intent, is part of that special service area, that there is a 60-day public hearing process required as part of that so we would get a final determination going through that process. So more to come based on the surveys being sent out, the survey responses, and we'll report that on December 11 at the Committee of the Whole.
Thank you. Barry, back to you for the November Cow meeting.
Before I mention the November Cow, I do want to add one more part to Public Works Director Fed votes. We do appreciate Alderman Cannon being at another meeting for the folks here. It was lively. There was some interesting discussion, especially because there is a subdivision that is looking in that area, too. So we do appreciate him there. But back to the Committee of the Whole, and I do have one item to add to it. So we'll have a 7B request by Arthur J. Gallagher. Sorry, Peter, I tried using your name. ComEd annual report will be here, so everybody will see Joe attorney do his usual ComEd report. Remember, this is part of the white papers that all the municipalities, when we had all the issues with ComEd, they do have to do an annual report. We will have a fiscal year 2019 community event. We will have an IRF update, street widening versus resurfacing. It's time to have some of that discussion. I know that the ad hoc committee has had a brief discussion on that. ITAP grant application for a bike path, we're going to have that discussion. And number seven that I'm actually going to add is about contingency. Obviously, with the fire station project, we're going to have a quick conversation about that. So those are the seven items that are scheduled for the November 20 Committee of the Whole
Thank you, Mr. Crumstock. There is a request, there is a request to go into closed session to discuss union negotiations under Illinois 5L CS 120-2 of the Illinois Open Meeting Act. There is also a request to review closed session minutes under 5 Illinois 120-2 C21 of the Illinois Open Meeting Act. And finally, personnel under the same act of the Illinois Opens Meetings Act. It does require a motion and a roll call. Do I have a motion? Mr. Cannon has made the motion. Mr. Majikas has seconded. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Baner?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
Majikas?
Definitely.
Gallo?
Yes.
Seven in favor and none opposed. We will now enter closed session. The audience and press are advised that we do not anticipate taking any action upon returning to open session.